Hello and welcome to American Motherhood, where we explore how society shapes the motherhood experience in America. I'm Bethany, a liberal mom of two in central Ohio. I'm on a mission to bridge the divide between liberal and conservative moms through honest, respectful conversation. Today, we continue our local election series with council member and vice chair Megan Ream Snyder. Elected to Westerville City Council in 2021, Megan is a mom of two, Assistant Director of Grants at Otterbine University, an active nonprofit board member, and a lifelong Westerville community leader. I found her to be genuine, thoughtful, and intentional in her work. In our conversation, we reflect on her first term, her vision for Westerville's future, and the balance of motherhood, personal ambition, and community caregiving. If you like what you hear, be sure to subscribe to American Motherhood on your favorite podcast app. Leave a review or simply share the podcast with a friend. My goal is to make this election more accessible to you, and I would be so thankful if you would help spread the word to our Westerville voters. Okay, let's dive in. Today, I am so excited to have council member Megan Ream Snyder with us. Megan, thank you so much for being here. To start, can you tell us about yourself?
Yeah, well, first, thank you for doing this. I think it's such a great idea to talk to all the candidates, and I love the idea of a podcast, so awesome. I am Megan Ream Snyder. I currently am on City Council. This is, I'm wrapping up my first term and I'm running for reelection. I'm currently the vice chair. And I am a lifelong Westerville resident. I went to Westerville North. Go Warriors! But my kids will go to South, so we're a house divided. So it's a little fun there. I was home with my kids for most of my adult life. I was a stay-at-home mom. And I joked that people would say, "Well, what do you do?" And I'd say, "Well, I'm on City Council, but I think I'm like a professional volunteer." I have seven jobs, none of them pay me. So I was pretty active in the PTA, Rotary, Uptown Westerville Inc., Neighborhood Bridges, The Big Bus.
Yeah.
All sorts of things. And then last year, as my kids are getting a little older, I was looking for more to do, apparently.
Yeah.
And now I work at Otterbine full-time in addition to City Council. So I'm the Assistant Director of Grants and Corporate Engagement at Otterbine. And I have two kids who are 10 and 12. And like I said, they're getting a little older. But 10 and 12 are great ages because, you know, they kind of can like do things on their own, but they're not embarrassed by me yet. So that is the best. That's a little bit about me.
Yeah, that's wonderful. I do want to dig in a little bit to The Big Bus. Can you tell us more about that?
So The Big Bus started, I'm trying to think of maybe, well, it started right after I finished my first City Council run, which is crazy to me to think that. And I had met Tracy Davidson, who was president of the school board. And she was running for reelection at that time as well. And in her campaigning, she had been going into these neighborhoods that were primarily immigrant families. Not all of the parents spoke great English, very low income. And, you know, the moms there, she campaigned, she's talking, "What do you need?" And they were just saying to her, "We need help with these things." But a lot of these families are, they're one-car families, they're lower income. So they don't have access to a lot of services that maybe if you had to drive to them or whatever. So she said, "I have this idea, will you help me?" While we were campaigning. And I was just, "Okay, sure, I'll help you." And of course, as soon as the campaign was over, if you know Tracy, she's a doer. She's like, "All right, we're diving in headfirst." I think we had our first meeting of this board that she assembled in February. I think it was March or April, we had bought a school bus.
Wow.
So The Big Bus is, it's a mobile tutoring organization. So we have two buses now. We have a school bus and Coda very generously donated a bus to us.
Wow.
It's amazing. So we got in both buses. We turned them into mobile classrooms. They have Wi-Fi, they have Chromebooks, they have comfortable seating. And we take them to the neighborhoods. It's on a schedule, so the kids know when to expect us. And we do after-school tutoring, K through 12. And then we also have English language classes for the mothers or the fathers typically. We get the moms. And then simultaneously, we do pre-K programming because a lot of the moms are home with their littles. And so they don't have childcare. So that's something that we offer is they come to us, we'll do, you know, classes for you, and then your child is somewhere safe to be while you're doing them. So that's a little bit of The Big Bus.
Amazing, that's so wonderful. So is it primarily just servicing Westerville? Are there goals to expand it, or what does that look like?
So we have three sites right now that we go to, three neighborhoods that we consistently visit. And we targeted those neighborhoods based on information from the school district. They've given us, these neighborhoods have lower test scores or higher rates of free and reduced lunch. You know, we kind of combine factors to find the areas of highest need. So there are, there's one neighborhood within the corporation limits of Westerville that we visit, and two neighborhoods that are in Westerville City Schools, but not corporation limits of Westerville. So we're, they're close, but you know, it's a different boundary. But, you know, we consider them all Westerville kids.
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, that's so great. Okay, thank you for that. And, okay, so going back to your first campaign, what motivated you to run for City Council?
I had always been interested in government. I mean, even in high school, that was my favorite class. My AP Government teacher was the one who gave me my diploma. And I, I just thought it was so fascinating. I majored in Political Science in college for a little while. And then my dad was like, "What are you gonna do with that degree?" And I was like, "Well, I don't know yet." He was like, "Maybe pick something else."
Nobody knows what they want to do at that point, right?
So I actually ended up majoring in social work. But, you know, that interest has always been there. And when my kids were really little, like I said, I was home with them. It's very lucky that I was able to do that. But I was getting involved in the PTA. And, you know, I just love that feeling of community. You go to things and you know people, and you can build something that people come enjoy. And I did the Citizens Police Academy. At that time, my sister had just been sworn in as a police officer. And so she was like, not in Westerville, but she was like, "You gotta go do it," you know? You gotta, you know, she's giving me a hard time. So I did that. And I was appointed to Charter Review Commission, which is something that happens every 10 years in the city. And we, it's a citizen group that reviews the city charter and proposes ballot amendments to the charter, which then go to the ballot. People vote on them, and they become part of the charter. So I did that before I ran for council, and I loved it. You know, it was like to see something, to work with people and see something come to life, and then put it on the ballot and have people vote on it, and have it be now an impactful change in the city was so interesting and so rewarding. So, you know, at the same time, there, you know, I happen to know Kathy Kukuzi, who was the mayor at the time. Everybody loves Kathy, right? Everybody knows Kathy. And she knew I was interested, and so she was willing to have conversations with me. I mean, and other women too, I should say, Diane Fosselman as well. And Mike Hayek, who's currently our chair, was also very willing to talk to me, offer me resources. When Kathy was gonna retire, her election cycle was coming up, and she said, "You know, I'm gonna retire, and you should consider running. It would be a good year, you know, a good pool." So I said, "Okay." And so I ran. And at the time, it was very interesting. There was no one my age on council. I mean, everyone was older, retired. There was no one with young children. And so I kind of had this little bit of, "Ooh, am I qualified to do this?" But I will say, I'm so fortunate that I had female mentors and women who were willing to sit down with me and talk to me and share with me. Because, you know, the thing they reiterated over and over is you have a point of view that no one else has. So whether you think you're qualified or not, you have to look at it like, you can offer a point of view that no one else here can, and that is valuable. So that's part of why, you know, that's how I ended up running for council. And that, that female mentorship piece, I think, is something that's really important to me as we go through campaign cycles and boards and commissions. I think we have to reach out to each other because women have to be asked to run seven times on average before they'll run for public office. Which is crazy to me because I'm not saying all women and not saying every single man, but typically, men are much more likely to jump in without being asked so many times. And we're just as qualified. But we have to help each other out, help each other get there. So I was very fortunate that I had them.
Thank you so much for that message because that has been a motivator for this podcast as well, right? Women are fabulous. We need to support each other. We need to get out there and make our voices heard. That's great. Okay, so how would you describe your time on City Council these past four years?
My time on City Council, this has been such a journey. You know, what you think you're gonna do when you join council, it's, it's probably like 10% of what you do when you join council, only because you cannot ever comprehend the depths to which you're gonna learn about things like transmission lines and utility poles, you know? There is just no way that you can really know that until you're in it, or the mix of, you know, water to salt in the brine on the roads. Like, there's just, you're like, "Oh, we're really getting into, we're really going into it."
Right.
But my, and you know, there's just things that come up that you would have never thought. For example, you know, we tried to merge with Harlem Township. Those things, we could have never seen coming. But I've been lucky. I, my board assignments over the past four years have included Uptown Westerville Inc., which does Farmers Market, Fourth Fridays, all that good stuff. I was on their board as a resident before I joined council. And when I joined council, then I took on the council appointment to the board. So that was fun. I was like, "I get to stay with my friends."
Right.
But, you know, that was really cool. And I've been on, I was on the Parks and Rec Board as a council appointee. And that actually was the same thing. I was on the Parks and Rec Board as a resident. And then when I joined council, I became the citizen rep. And currently, I am the council representative for what we call JDC, which is the Joint Economic Development Zone for Blendon Township.
Got it.
We have a partnership with Blendon Township. They can't levy, townships can't levy income taxes. So we partner with them. As a city, we can levy that. It's a legal thing.
Sure.
I will not go into intricate details, and I will definitely get them wrong. But essentially, you know, we get a small portion of that, and we work with them to kind of, you know, collaborate on what, things that are happening right outside of our city.
Right.
So that's a great way to be involved there. And then I'm also the representative, the council representative, for the Ohio Municipal Electric Association. I always have to slow down when I say it because I'm choking with my words. But that is really, that has been so educational because I was not an electricity expert, nor even a novice when I joined council. I did not think that I would be talking about electricity so much. But given everything that's happening in the region, and especially with intel and data centers coming, and the increased demand for energy, it's actually been really cool to learn about how our municipal electric works in conjunction with all of the current events. I just understand it so much more. And that role is a lot of advocacy. So we do legislative rallies in DC and a lot of education for me just to kind of learn what are the challenges unique to a municipally-owned electric division? As opposed to, you know, AEP, which is obviously for-profit, but we're a nonprofit. And it's a different ballgame, which is great for residents because we can keep our costs much lower. I think now it's like 77 cents on the dollar for utilities compared to what you would pay outside of our city limits. 72, 77, I'm not sure. They're gonna, Mike Hayek is gonna get mad at me if I go along that one because that's one of his favorite things because he used to work in energy. But, you know, it makes a difference in the long term. So that's a little bit about what I do my council in the last four years.
Yeah, that's great. That's very helpful. So in these last four years, where do you feel you've made the greatest impact as a member of City Council?
You know, I was looking at this question, and this one's so hard to answer because there's like these larger, overreaching impacts. You know, you could say, "I love that we removed gendered language from the Coda idol." Which sounds like very liberal or crazy. But really, it's just, instead of fireman, you know, now we have like firefighter, which encompasses what we already kind of have in our vocabulary and all of the wonderful individuals who are working in our fire department, who maybe are not men.
Right.
Right? So it's really not that revolutionary, but it is really cool to see that.
Yeah.
There's like those larger, bigger picture things. But then there's the smaller things that I just, people never see that in a public meeting. Like, the water bottle filler at Highlands, at the front of the bathrooms.
Yeah.
Ever started, there wasn't one. And you had to go up to the concession stand. And I remember going up there with my giant Stanley, and I'm like, "Can you refill this every time?" And I just stand in line, and I went to the Parks and Rec Director and like, "We have an entire pool with no water bottle filler." And he was like, "Oh." Like, it was just one of those things that had not, you know, just people, staff is not at the pool during the day, right? They're working. So they got me a water bottle filler. So now there is a water bottle filler at Highlands, drinking fountain. So those things are not huge, but that's part of being at council is being out and seeing those little needs, you know? Or, you know, let's see, what else? The bathrooms at some of the parks now are on automatic locks, so we can save on staffing. Or we, the Shero, you know, if, I don't know if you've been to the library recently, the Shero paint on the drive there.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Yes, that was a passion project of mine because my kids walk there all the time. And, you know, drivers sometimes aren't paying attention. And we wanted the bike path to come all the way up. And because of easements and land use, that was not a reality right now, maybe long-term. But I'm like, "What can we do in the short term?" So we worked at the library, they were very kind, they, you know, absolutely accommodating. And we got the crosswalk put in. So now you see that crosswalk from where the bike path ends, and you can cross over into the library. That was me like, "Can we get a crosswalk, please? Can we get something?" Put the paint there so that, you know, people are paying attention a little more. Just little things like that I love. Like, those are my accomplishments because those things impact people's day-to-day lives in a way that you don't think about when you're just going to the library. You know, it's not like, "Well, I'm gonna call my council member." Well, actually, sometimes we will do, which is kind of an interesting thing. But, you know, I love those little things because it's a lasting impact, and it does matter.
Right, right. Oh, that's great. And so on the flip side, what have been some of the more difficult decisions you've faced on council?
So in general, difficult decisions, I think for me, are the ones when there's going to be someone upset either way. I mean, sometimes there's not necessarily a clear right answer. It's just weighing what fits best with strategic priorities of the city, what we have the capacity to do, staffing or financially. You know, sometimes you're just kind of looking at what you have and making a decision. And sometimes you know the right answer, but it's gonna make someone upset, and you understand why someone is upset. That's the hard part. You know, we make a zoning decision or something like that where it's very clear what the right answer is. You know, the code says this, this is what we need to do. Oh, that still affects someone negatively. And, you know, I think a big one, not a zoning decision, a big challenge that we've had was the foam densifier. And I don't know if you've heard about that.
No.
We were gonna put in a foam densifier. We had a grant from the Ohio EPA. And a foam densifier is, it's very small. It's a, it almost looks like the size of a post office box I got on the street, like the blue ones. You know, they're like kind of, I don't know, chest height, whatever. And you put styrofoam into it, and it warms it up and it condenses it, and then it pushes it out. And then you can recycle it, or there's companies that buy it to recycle it. Essentially, it reduces waste in the landfill.
Okay.
So we got a grant to buy this foam densifier. And we had to vote to accept the grant money, and it just blew up. There was a lot of residents who were extremely opposed to it. Very, it was very challenging because I think there was misinformation everywhere about what a foam densifier was. You know, we had people on one end saying, "They're putting in a toxic waste plant at the service station", which is right there by Allen Creek, the BMX and the skate park, right? By neighborhoods. And we're like, "No, we're not, no, we're not." And, you know, you have, we had residents who were fairly enough asking, "Well, where is the data that this is safe?" And we're, and I will be honest, we were behind the ball as a city and as a staff. And we were not prepared because sometimes you just don't know what people are gonna have interest in. And I don't think I expected any interest in that. And it got to the point where it became obvious that as a city, as, you know, council and staff, we had not done a good job communicating with residents what was going in and why, and what the pros and cons were. Because to resident, there's some residents who were very upset about it. And to their credit, there, it wasn't perfect. You know, there was some issues that they pointed out that, in my opinion, which should not have derailed the project, but we should have been able to address those concerns.
Sure.
And we were not ready to do so. And when you're behind then as a government, it looks like at best, you're not prepared. At worst, you're hiding something.
Right.
So we eventually had to vote to kill the project. We did not have a foam densifier. I still think it would have been good overall. But, you know, the residents did not feel comfortable with it. And ultimately, we're here to represent the residents. And so that was a very, very challenging decision.
Yeah, absolutely. I imagine that came through at the meetings, and you have to also engage with those residents outside in personal manners.
It's good. I mean, there were some lessons learned and a couple, one of the women who really was just very passionate about it.
Yeah.
I talked to her on the phone after we had voted to decline the funds. And she, you know, I don't agree with her point of view on the foam densifier, but she had some really good points about communication, transparency, that kind of thing for council. And so I thought that was a very good lesson overall.
That's great. And then, and I think that's really a great reflection as well, and a great learning lesson for, for the entire council. Okay, if there's something else maybe you haven't mentioned yet, what has surprised you the most about serving on City Council?
I think all of the backend work. You know, and I say, I don't say backend, I, you know, I've said behind the scenes before, and everyone's like, "Don't say that, it sounds like you're hiding things." We're not. I mean, you know, when you get to a public meeting, so much work has been put into everything that we're voting on. So much time, education. I mean, our staff, so for example, we recently bought into a gas power plant, which, natural gas, which is good for our residents because, and we also bought into wind and solar. So we are trying to do green energy, but we do need baseload energy. There's just no way around that. And we're looking for ways to keep our costs down for residents long-term. This is a great way to do it. But we didn't do that just like on a whim. We started that conversation probably a year before we even voted on it. And it was city management, electric division kind of floating this, "Hey, we're looking at this." And they had been talking about it for years before that. So all of that work had already, you know, they've been doing that. And they spent so much time with us as a council, educating us about what is, what is this plant? What are the financial concerns, what are the risks? Both financial and environmental, I mean, everything. I mean, to down to the point where they, we went on tours of the plant. So, I mean, now I've been to a power plant, and I've toured around in the hard hat and everything. And we were very, it was very cool because the plant has a down month where they turn it off, and they do maintenance. So like they take like all the, everything, and they clean them, they repair them, all the parts. And so that's just part of their regular system. And we got to go during their down months, so we got to really get in there. I mean, we got to see them, all the things taken apart, all, and it's just, the scale of it is insane. But by the time we get to the public meeting, you know, we're voting on this, it's three readings. We're voting on this. And I kept saying in the public meeting, for the record, the reason no one's asking questions in the public meeting is because we have had work sessions, we have had what we call snack and studies, which is basically like class. Like, they give us like a little class with snacks on certain topics. And we've toured the plant. I mean, we've talked to city management individually. We have had so much education, and staff has put so many hours into this one thing. Nobody sees that, but we, we see it. And so that, that's definitely surprised me. And even on a council member level, how much time we spend doing that? You know, we say this is a part-time job, and I think it's what you make of it, really, because no one's forcing me to go to the power plant, right? I mean, I can say no, I don't have time to go and go vote on a public meeting. And that happens sometimes, just people get busy with work or whatever. But by the most part, this council is very engaged. And it takes a lot of time to do those things, or go visit the foam densifier, or go out to the parks. Because sometimes people say, "Hey, there's like this low spot in the field. Can you get someone to fill it?" I'm like, "Well, I gotta go see the low spot now," you know? Or someone called me and they're like, "Hey, they're replacing, replacing a sidewalk right next to my house." And the sidewalk is great, but they dug out really deep. And now what's gonna happen to my yard? Because it's just like a drop-off into the sidewalk. And it's like, "Okay, let me go out there and look." And then you look at it, you're like, "Oh, okay, we gotta fix that." So it's all this time doing those little things that I don't think you know you're gonna do when you run for council. Because how can you anticipate that? So that surprised me, how much time is in everything.
Yeah, absolutely. So how do the work sessions play into the Sunshine Laws? Like, what are you allowed to discuss behind the scenes? And what do you have to say for the meetings?
Yeah, so that's a multi-pronged thing. So work sessions are public meetings, they're filmed, you can watch them on Westerville TV. So those are in compliance with Sunshine Laws. There's no issues with those. And we post those just like you do any other public meeting following Sunshine Laws. So that's all available to the public. I mean, you can come to the work sessions, they're open, just like a regular meeting is. And we do have people come and listen, especially if it's a topic they're really interested in.
Sure.
Sometimes we have no one come.
Sure.
Sunshine Laws, you know, we are very careful with those. So for example, a snack and study, it is, we can have four council members together. Four is the limit. But for a snack and study, but you have the, it's like the number of council members, the content of things you discuss, all of these play into it, right? And is it spontaneous, is it planned? So a snack and study, for example, we can be there together. We cannot discuss policy. So they can come and they can, they can say, "Here is a..." Typically, what happens is they give us a slideshow about a topic, right? So we did one about energy transmission, the transmit behind the grid, front of the transmission, capacity, all of these things. And so they can give us a slideshow, and we can ask questions about that slideshow. What we cannot do in that snack and study, because that's not a public meeting, it's not televised, we cannot say, "I would like to see X, does anyone else agree?" Or I, you know, "How's everyone else feel about this?" Or "The city should do this." We cannot say that. And so it is really, we have to self-police, but staff polices, our chair is very good about policing, I police it. So anytime, you know, because sometimes it's like, "Oh, that's a great idea." And then we have to very carefully say, "Okay, but we're gonna pause on that." Or we can give individual feedback. Like, I can say to Chris, our electric division manager, "Say, Chris, I, I love the idea of having solar panels in Justice Center, but that's it." You know, I can't then turn to David and be like, "How do you feel?"
Yeah.
You know? So that's kind of where we have to leave it. So those are very careful about, and it's just education only. We don't talk about anything else. Outside of that, for Sunshine Laws, you know, we're all at a 5K, for example, and we run into each other. Well, we can take a photo together. You know, we can talk, "Hey, how are your kids? You know, how's your vacation?"
Yeah.
But we cannot talk anything council-related. And so we're careful about that. And usually, if we run into each other out, not in a council event, you know, we are talking socially because I do think you have to be friendly with your fellow council members. That's how you have the dialogue. So when we're talking about policy or things we wanna see, you know, a, a good example of this is one of my fellow council members, David, you know, he loves pollinator gardens, right?
Okay.
Who doesn't love pollinator garden? So, you know, he came on council, you know, he, he can call me, and we can talk about pollinator garden. And he can call the mayor and talk about a pollinator garden with him. And kind of garner like, "Hey, how do you feel about this?" You can have individual conversations with people, or "Let's grab coffee and discuss that. And maybe next week, I'm gonna talk to Aaron about the same topic that I'm kind of interested in, get his opinion." So that's where we talk behind the scenes. But what we can't do, like, I couldn't call David and go, "I wanna have pollinator gardens on the next agenda, do you agree, yes or no?" Okay, Aaron, I wanna have this on the next agenda, you agree? That becomes essentially like, kind of a meeting.
Right.
So you have to be careful about how you do it.
Yeah.
But we do have conversations outside of the public eye, and it's more brainstorming one-on-one. Just about, you know, you can't throw every crazy idea you have out in a public meeting forever, right? I mean, sometimes you have to vet that. And I've had ideas where I've thrown things out, and someone will look at me and go, "No, think that through." And then they're like, "Okay, here's X, Y, Z." And I'm like, "Oh, no, did not think about that from that perspective. You are right, we're not gonna say that again, that's not gonna work."
Right.
So we're very careful with the Sunshine Laws, but we can talk to each other outside of council. And it is valuable to do so. And it is valuable to do so. So there's a little bit about your work sessions, snack and study conversations.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, that's great. That's, that's helpful. And I'm, I'm glad to hear, I could, because I obviously appreciate those laws. You want to have insight into how decisions are made, but I have been wondering like how, what all goes into this? There's no way they know everything from this little bit of time.
Yeah, we, we definitely do not know everything. And
Yeah.
You know, I will say too, a lot of times we get the packet or we know a topic is coming. We also get a monthly look ahead. So we'll sit down and that's in groups of three. So in groups of three, we sit down with the city manager and the assistant city manager. Well, Mike and I do it in group of two, because it's chair and vice chair. So we go over the agenda first. And then once we approve it, then it goes to the rest of the members for their look ahead.
Okay.
But it'll be like the monthly, this is what's gonna be on the agenda this month for these meetings. And that's also an opportunity to ask questions. So we're safe in the sunshine laws because they do it in small groups. But that's an opportunity to look at the content for the month and say, hey, I've got questions. And then we might get the follow-up answers in an email, either individually. A lot of times city management will say, hey, this was a question that was raised and they will send us an email with the answer, which also follows sunshine and public records laws. Cause those are all public records. You can request those if you want to request our emails about electric. I mean, you can theoretically, right? So a lot of times the questions will come up and then the information will get shared in that, that way.
Okay, that's great. So switching gears a little bit, I want to talk about the next four years. What are your top priorities as you're campaigning for reelection?
So, I mean, the, the region as a whole is just growing and we know that there's increased demand for a lot of things. I mean, energy, housing, everything. So kind of priorities, goals is number one. Is revisiting our comp plan over the next four years, our community plan. Because, you know, it's not necessarily out of date, but before, when it was done, we didn't know about intel. The region was not growing at the pace that it's growing. I mean, data centers were not really on the public radar as such an infrastructure concern, not even concern, but just something to be aware of. So I think that we need to revisit the community plan, which we've been talking about and just make sure, you know, the, where we've got priorities for zoning and what type of zoning or does that make sense for what we're doing right now? Do we need to allow higher density in certain areas? What areas of the city can tolerate the higher density? Without impacting current residents? Those are all part of that community plan. You know, where do we need parks? What type of commercial development makes sense in these areas? Does all of these things still make sense? And fit into the economic picture? Because we have to have economic development. That's how the city is funded.
Right.
You know, we're funded by income tax, not property tax. So your property taxes primarily go to schools and the library. The fire gets a little bit, that's a voted levy. Um, and the city gets a tiny portion, but mostly it's in, income tax. So we need to look at all of these things where we have housing, where we have economic development. Does it make sense for the long-term growth of the city? What can we sustain? That's the other thing is we can only sustain so much in our 12 square miles with the amount of services that we have right now. Unless we want to increase the capacity for water, police, fire, sewer. I mean, all of these things go into it. So the comp plan is really important. That's a huge priority. And sort of in conjunction, parallel to that, we're talking a lot about redevelopment along South State Street. So once you get down closer to 270, I mean, that's been done really, really well. And, you know, if you go up to the post office where we've got the, you know, North High and Cohat apartments there, it's beautiful and it's wonderful. And then there's sort of that section there where, you know, maybe we could do some redevelopment, maybe that's the time. And in my opinion, this is not a city opinion, but in my opinion, that is an area that is really primed for those higher density, mixed-use developments. I mean, don't have single-family neighborhoods directly abutting. There are some single families, but you know, it's not like a front grove and you're gonna put now a high-rise in the middle of it, right? That's an area with the natural walkability. We already have public transit going through there. We already have the infrastructure. So we don't need to expand the infrastructure in the way that we would need to do for a greenfield. So that for me is a great priority to really touch housing and commercial and mixed use and walkability, transit. Like that has all that we could do in that section.
Right.
Really excited to touch that. And the last thing that I like really still want to think about is as we grow, as we get bigger, all of these great community events that we do need to stay, right? I mean, that, that's what makes Westerville so appealing in so many ways. And that's, Westerville has this unique thing where it feels like a small town a lot. I mean, it's not at all. But you go places and you typically see somebody you know, you, you know, your neighbors, you know, people are really connected in the community. But that only happens if we invest time, energy and resources into making that happen. So as a city, we have community partner funding, which is funding from our hotel bed tax that goes to nonprofits to help their mission. Uh, Uptown Westerville Inc., which does the farmer's market, Fourth Friday, Uptown and Tap, the ghost tours. I could go on and on, but amazing community programming, right? The city funds a third of their budget every year. And on top of that, you know, we're also not charging for the police presence. So we're doing all the, at Fourth Friday, you need the whole police presence, shutting down the roads, public service, the trash cleanup, all of those things, the city does on the city's dime. We don't ask UWI to pay for police officers, special duty. And I think that's really important. I mean, that's where we as a city can invest in these things that bring people together. The challenge will be as the city grows and these events are very popular. I mean, you've seen Fourth Friday, sometimes you just feel overwhelming. We do have to have other safety measures in place. You have to be, you know, as we've seen nationally, things happen. So we'll have to be proactive. And our police department and public service, they are, and community service, they're great about being proactive about safety. But that'll be a priority that we'll need to continually be thinking about. You can't just set that on the back burner. We have to say, yeah, we're gonna set aside time and energy to close down the road at Cleveland Avenue for the fireworks. Because that makes things safer for everyone.
Right.
So that is a huge priority for me.
Yeah. Oh, that's wonderful. And I, that's one of those things I love about Westerville is because of that small town feel, but we have so many resources available to us because we are a larger community. And that's, that's definitely what will, will keep us here, I think. So focusing in on housing, what are your thoughts on affordable housing? And what more could, could we do to support that?
This is such a complicated topic, especially in the context of local municipal government.
Yeah.
Because there is the larger conversation on the state, national level. And then there's our little piece of what we can affect in Westerville. And, you know, personally, I see the squeeze on housing, right? I mean, it's, I don't even think I could afford to buy my own house anymore. It's crazy. The challenge for a municipal government, especially Westerville, is we do not get the same funding from the county, the state that maybe the city of Columbus does to do some of their projects that they do. We just don't have those resources. So if we are talking about what types of housing to put in, the city is not a housing developer. We, we own some land, but we don't own all the land. And if someone sells their property that's zoned residential to a developer and that zoning is, doesn't need any amendments and they fit within the density requirements, we can't tell them what to price those houses at. I mean, that's just not what we do. So we can't affect it in that way, which is challenging. And if we're gonna talk about affordable housing, that, the cost of housing is rising. But the cost of construction is rising, the cost of all these things is rising. So if we're gonna lower the cost of housing below market rate, then that, those funds have to come from somewhere. And so the question is, do you want it to come from the current residents? And I don't think our current residents want that. So there is where the rub is. So my position on housing is that, given the financial structure of the municipal government that we are in right here. And the current residents probably don't want to pay to subsidize the housing. And we don't want to damage the schools. That's the other thing. A lot of this comes at the expense of public schools if you abate some of these developments. And that's just not an option for me. So outside of that, right, what can we do as a city to help with housing? I think a huge thing that we can do is allow more density. So when we talk about South State Street, right, can we allow more density in those areas that maybe we traditionally have? Because that's an area that can naturally support it. I think that's great. I think the other thing that we need to do is prioritize diversity of housing types. So can we encourage developers who we know are friendly to the city, you know? Hey, we are open to townhomes, duplexes, apartments. So you, we're open to these things now. Westerville is not primarily focused on single-family housing as a council. We are open to this. And so that's part of it is kind of encouraging a diversity of housing types, which I, I hope will help. I mean, obviously if we increase the housing stock, that will help in a lot of ways. And, you know, if you're a retired couple, your kids have gone to college and you live in a four-bedroom house in Spring Grove, if you want to stay in Westerville, where do you go? You're not gonna sell your house. There's nowhere to go. So you're gonna stay. But if we can offer a different variety of housing types, maybe you say, you know what, I'm gonna sell this house. I'm gonna move to a condo, you know, South State Street or townhome on West Street. So that's a way that we can help impact that. And we can do other things too. One of the things that we've recently done that I think is great is we amended our ADU code regulations, which is accessory dwelling units. So like, if you think like a granny flat or garage apartment.
Okay.
We've changed the code to be more permissive with the height, square footage, uh, just a lot of those like nitpicky things that kind of, maybe if you can't have a, an accessory dwelling unit that's big enough for someone to live in, you're not gonna spend all that money to build it, right?
Right.
So we've relaxed a lot of those rules. We also made them what we call by right in certain areas of the city. Which just means you don't need to go to zoning appeals to get essentially like a waiver to build one. You have the legal right to have an ADU on your property in these areas. A lot of HOAs will take that right away, but you know, we're trying to at least foster that.
Right.
You know, they haven't really taken off mostly because they're expensive, like cost is an issue. But we're hoping, you know, by doing these things that we're signaling to residents, to builders, developers, landowners, that we are open to creative ideas, you know, bring up your creative ideas, we're willing to listen. I mean, do you want to diversify the housing stock? That's what we can do as a city. And I will sidebar a little bit on affordable housing. Because I, you know, I say, we talk so much about the cost of housing, but really it's the cost of living overall, right, is rising. And so if I cannot personally affect the cost of housing, I can't bring down the cost of housing. It's just not something I personally can do in the next four years, if I'm honest. But what we can do, what can we do holistically as a city to keep the cost of living low? Can we offer enough transit options that you don't need to buy a car for your 16-year-old? Maybe they can bike with their safe bike paths. Maybe they live in a walkable neighborhood, so they could go work down the street to Dairy Queen. Or can we keep electric rates low? Because if you're getting a $500 utility bill every month, if your mortgage is affordable, but your gas, electric, so if all that is a thousand dollars a month, well, we're kind of in the same boat, right? Or do you live in a city where you don't need to spend a hundred bucks to go out on a Friday night? Cause you walk downtown. Could you go to Fourth Friday? You know, we're on a tight budget. We can go walk around Fourth Friday, see our friends, maybe spend $10 on an ice cream cone and we're good. We can go home. So what are we offering to residents? And then, you know, one thing that I personally have used, so I'm like on a tangent sidebar.
No, I love it. It's great.
Personally, I send my kids to the Parks and Rec Fun Club every summer.
Okay.
It is $200 a kid for the summer. Now, granted, if the weather is bad, you know, they can't be there. So it's not a 100% solution. But what a budget-friendly option, you know? So can we as a city offer things like that where it's low-cost recreational opportunities?
Right.
So that we're lowering that, that cost of living across the board. You know, our rec center is $26 a month and, you know, taps out at $80 for the family. Okay. Well, you can swim, you can rock climb, you can work out. I mean, what can we do to touch those things? If we cannot fix the housing piece, we can do everything else. Not do everything else. I should not say that. Oh my God. But we can look at all of the other facets of public life and things that we impact.
Yeah.
And that to me is a very good use of our time. I'm not saying we shouldn't talk about housing or that we shouldn't do those things. But I want to make sure in the housing conversation, as a city council, we don't get lost in singularly focusing on what can we do to lower the cost of housing, then we're ignoring the other things that will dramatically impact our residents.
Right, right. You gotta leave room for, for all of those factors. That's great. That's it. How can city council collaborate with Westerville City Schools to support young people and families?
So Westerville, I don't know if you know much about the Westerville Partnership, if that's been brought up in your
No.
podcast. It's really unique. So what we have in this city across Westerville, I guess, let's say is what we call the partnership. And that is the head of Autobuy. So President Comerford, or one of the VPs usually comes, the chamber, so like Janet from the chamber, we have the city, so city manager and usually chair and vice chair go. We have, um, the library executive director and, you know, usually someone else from the library as well. And also the school superintendent, school board president, treasurer. We all meet quarterly as a group to really talk about how can we support each other? And, you know, sometimes it's timing of levies. You know, there have been a lot of times where the city will hold off on a levy if we know the school's gonna put one on. Or vice versa, because we don't want to have a fire levy, a library levy and a school levy all on the ballot at the same time, right? Cause then that's overwhelming. So we coordinate those things a lot. We have a lot of those conversations. Or even just, you know, this past levy that failed, the city council had a resolution in support of the levy. So the partnership is very unique in that we take the time to talk about the needs. And I think that conversation is so important to continue. A really cool program that we, you know, has come out of the partnership, it's called Workwise. And essentially it's for bringing businesses in to talk to the city, the chamber, the schools about what are your needs? How can we all work together to build a, build a workforce? Another cool one we do that people don't know about is there's a partnership with the schools and our electric division now, where we will take interns for, uh, linemen. And they get to learn all these skills while they're in high school. And then they can come out with a very well-paying job right out of high school. Everyone's gonna go to college, but those opportunities are ways that I would like us to continue to partner with, you know, school district. Because those are really impactful for those students. And we can offer those opportunities. And it's great for us as a city too, because now we have access to this talent, this pipeline. And so that's, the partnership is really needed in that way.
Yeah, that's awesome. No, I did not know about that. So I'll be looking forward to dig into that more. Okay, just a few more questions for you. Well, I should ask, it's a big one. Um, what challenges do you anticipate in the next four years beyond what, what you've discussed?
Yeah. I mean, you know, I've talked about it a lot, but just the growth of the region, that is gonna impact everything, you know? We're, housing shortage, utility rates are gonna go up as the data needs. I mean, right now, electricity is a huge thing where we just are looking at across the nation, right? Like do we have a generation to meet the need? And that's certainly gonna be something here. Do we have enough water? Do we, like, all of these services that go along with the population growth, we'll have to figure out a way to manage. We'll have to figure out a way to pay for the infrastructure upgrades without taxing our residents more. So these are all just challenges that will, I mean, are always ongoing, but I think because the area is just growing at such a rapid pace.
Right.
We're gonna see a little more pressure from those over the next four, 10, 15 years. And as infrastructure ages, it's not cheap to replace that, you know? So we gotta be very proactive, very careful about how we manage those resources and money and growth and how many people can the city support, you know, for building housing, building, building, building. That's fantastic in that area. But then do we have the services? You know, what, is your police time gonna remain the same? Your EMS time, those things matter just as much. And they're part of the picture, kind of gets lost sometimes. But, but just the growth in the region is gonna be a challenge. I think the other thing that I noticed, especially as we're campaigning, but just kind of, you know, over the last few years is the political discourse is so divided. And it's challenging sometimes in the city government realm. Because our day-to-day operations, what we're doing is not partisan for the most part. I mean, there are certainly things that are, and there are certainly values that I hold that I, I want to use as a guiding lens for my work at council. But if we're talking about the need to, you know, buy a piece of equipment that more effectively mixes brine for the road, that is not partisan. You know, most people can agree that's probably a good idea. And we get lost in sort of this larger conversation. And why I try to remind people, you know, that's not what we're doing here. Those things are important. I am not sitting here saying I don't care. I do care very deeply, but that's not what we're Those things are important. I am not sitting here saying I don't care. I do care very deeply, but that's not what we're doing. And as the seven of us on city council, we need to make sure that we're staying focused on the work that we need to do. And we can go to the city, you know, I've done it and a lot of members of council have done. We go to the state house, we advocate, we talk to our state reps. And we've passed legislation in the city that certainly I agree with from an ideological standpoint. But it's all focused on making the city better for our residents. And there are some issues that we just are not going to be able to tackle. And so I think staying focused on what we can do is very, very important. And that frustrates people a lot right now. It's, and I think it's because people are just frustrated. And if you don't feel like you have a voice or you're not being heard, we are very accessible. You know, a state rep maybe isn't. And so people come to us and I get that on such a deep level, I do. But then I am not going to be able to change the state or the federal level immigration policy, you know? I can, we can talk within our police department about what is our policy? Does it align with our values as a council? We can have those conversations. But in terms of, you know, changing the way ICE works, I can't do that. So it becomes challenging when everyone's so divided. And then, you know, sometimes on council, there are people who are not happy. If, you know, I'm a Democrat, but I'm, I'm fairly, I try to stay focused on the city. But, you know, sometimes there, I have Republican colleagues who they have a good idea about a curb, right? That's a bad example, but you know, I think it's something like silly and innocuous.
Yeah.
But we have to work together. And I cannot sit in my seat and say, I'm not going to go talk to a Republican congressman because I don't like the way he voted on something. I, I need to go talk to him because he's also on the energy committee and that directly impacts the city of Westerville's municipal electric. So I have to be able to have a conversation with that person, even if I think their policy on X is absolutely abhorrent. I have to put that aside for the best interest of the city as a whole. And when the political discourse is just, everyone on the other side is bad no matter what, then we're not going to be able to do the work we need to do. And that is a significant challenge that I think we're all facing. I mean, me, but you know, people who are more left than me and people who are more right than me, we're all facing that challenge where we know at this level the work that we need to do. And we do have to interact with other people of other viewpoints. And sometimes maybe it's distasteful. Maybe you kind of like them as a person. You're like, I don't get your views. Like, like, and it's all part of this complexity of being a human being, but
Yeah.
that, that is a challenge, that is a challenge for sure.
Yeah. And that's a great segue. So my next question will be what leadership qualities do you admire in others? And how would you describe your own leadership style? Um, and, and I'll take a moment to reiterate that I appreciate your willingness to work with your colleagues despite some opinions and some other initiatives that they have. That is a, a leadership quality that I admire.
Well, thank you. I think, yeah, I'm, that's one of the things that I, when I look at other leaders who I admire, that's one of the things, just collaboration, um, willing to listen. I think a good leader has a point of view and has an opinion, but is willing to sit back and listen. Um, really, I think solid leadership also sees, acknowledges and values the contributions and the skills of others and can kind of lean on, you know, you can look at someone and say, okay, I know you're really good at this. So I'm going to go to you for this question or I'm going to ask your opinion. You know, Mike Hayek is the Chair of Council and he's been in chair for a long time. And, you know, he's definitely of a different political bent than I am. But one of the things I've always admired about him is he will listen to me. You know, we might butt heads, you know, there's been times where we're like, errr, at each other.
Right.
And then we can have a conversation. And sometimes one of us, both of us doesn't get our way, that's fine. I don't mind disagreeing with someone, but that respect, the willing to listen, collaboration, that's what I admire. And still, I try to emulate that, you know, in my leadership style, I try to be very collaborative. I'm sure I have so much more to learn. I, I think it's fun to see what people's gifts are and kind of let them shine a little bit and put a little faith in them. I think that's, that's really cool.
Yeah. Oh, that's great. Um, how has our community responded to female leadership? And do you feel like you're treated any differently than, than your male colleagues?
I would say as a whole, overall, I mean, the response is fantastic. You know, people are really excited to see a more balanced gender balance on the council and, and city leadership overall. I mean, right now, we have a female city manager and a female city chief. And it's very cool. I was in the partnership meeting that I mentioned earlier and, you know, Janet runs the chamber and we've got a female superintendent, a female city manager. It's just female executive director of the library. The overwhelming response is very positive. I mean, and these are just the people who are the most qualified to do the job. It's, it's been great. I think every woman in a position of, I wouldn't even say leadership, but any position really. You know, there's just always challenges that are unique to being a female trying to do anything. As a council member, yeah, sure, there have been instances where people will defer to my male colleagues or they take them more seriously. I wouldn't say it's an overwhelming amount or it'll happen once and then they realize that I'm the most prepared in the room or I have showed up with the most questions. And that's not a dig on my male colleagues, but you know, I, I really take pride in being prepared, being ready. And so then that kind of goes away very quickly once I start talking and it's like, okay, now we're in a conversation. The biggest challenge that I would say is unique to being the woman, but also just unique to my age and demographic is I am currently still the only person on council, men, women, who has a full-time job and young children. I mean, there are people on council, most of us on council work full-time in addition to council. So there are people who understand that challenge. And there are members of council who have older kids, high school and beyond. I'm the only one who's still raising young kids and working full-time and doing council. And that just presents such unique challenges that sometimes I don't think they think about. So, you know, things will get scheduled or things will happen and it's like, ha, okay, well, I can't do that. Or we're going to have to adjust. So as council gets more diverse, I mean, I think those challenges still exist. But being the first one to be on council, I mean, especially when I joined, I think everyone at council, when I joined, with the exception of maybe one or two, was like retired or working part-time. You know, they, they didn't have young kids anyhow, like, it's not, they, all of them worked very hard. I'm not saying they don't work, but you know, it wasn't the same. And so one example is we used to get our packets on a Thursday. Now we get them on a Friday for the Tuesday meeting. And everyone else was fine with moving it to Friday. And I'm like, no, guys, like, I need that extra day because like, if I don't get it till Friday afternoon and I've got kids stuff all, all weekend.
Right.
And it, it's like, that's so chaotic. Like, please give me the extra day. And staff needed more time to get it to us, so we're getting it on a Friday. So that's a challenge sometimes, but you know, no one else even thought of it through that lens. And so it's like, okay, all right, great. And so for the most part, it's fine. I mean, obviously there's always a few things here and there. But I think any woman in any position probably knows what I'm talking about. You're juggling all the things and 10 people will be great. And one person makes a comment and it's like so frustrating and icky. And just have to focus on the other 10 people and showing up, being prepared. And, you know, that's all you can do really.
Right. Surround yourself with the people who support you when you're able to. And, and again, you touched on that dichotomy of, of motherhood and how you want to be there for your kids, but also show up for yourself as well and make a difference for your, your community and yeah.
It's a, it's a lot to juggle sometimes. And I will say it's rewarding and, you know, I worry sometimes, oh my gosh, I'm missing this thing or I want to be there with my kids. But they enjoy seeing it. That's, that's cool. To see them be like, oh, cool. Like, or they open that Westerville magazine. And like I said, sometimes, you know, at this age, sometimes they still think it's cool. Sometimes they're like, a little, mom, okay, you know? But it is very rewarding for my, for me, at least, to have my kids see me in that position and making an impact. Because I want them to see that you can do things for yourself. I mean, you can grow up and have kids and still have passions of your own. You don't have to lose yourself in motherhood. You can, can't do it all at once, but you can do a lot of things sometimes.
Different seasons, different chapters.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Wonderful. Well, thank you again, Megan, so much for being here and sharing all of your insight. Where can we find you this election season? And for those who want to support, how can we do that for you?
So you can find me on Facebook and Instagram. My social media is just Westerville with Megan. So it's very easy, Westerville with Megan. And I usually post all the things I'm doing there. And if you, I mean, I am always out at community events. So I need, I'll have my Westerville with Megan t-shirt on. I will live in that shirt until November. But if you see me out, please say hi. I love talking to people. You can find me on the internet. If you want to support the campaign, you can, I'll have things on social media about donate, yard signs, all that good stuff. So I would say that social media is probably the best place to find me. That's like the most universally accessible. You know, you can always feel free to send me a message on there and can email me at my city email, which is just Megan dot Ream Snyder at Gmail. So, or you can find some city website, but I'm fairly accessible on socials especially, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Well, thank you again, Megan, so much for, for being here. I appreciate your time.
Well, thank you for having me. I'm excited to listen to all the other podcasts too.
Yeah, wonderful.